You said you.
Yes, and with the permission of council, I can work directly with them on just the minor modifications.
Any other readiness?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
So I, I, I again, I want to make clarification. Are we establishing it today and then coming back to?
No, we have to establish it with an ordinance, and that's what we're going to do Monday. Because our city attorney has some things legally stuck, so we're going to carry over. So we can't rush it to establish it.
Got it.
Yeah. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let the record show as you have us. Thank you ladies very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number three, cancel of fourth Monday city council meeting during Christmas holiday. What's council's plan typically we have? Yes, Councilwoman Wallace.
I'm with the council before the Monday city council meeting during the Christmas holiday.
It's been properly moved and seconded that item three cancel of Monday city council meeting during Christmas holiday. Good food. Further motion, ready for the discussion? Question, yes sir. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, said it. Item four, discussing take action on residents' water bill issues and contract with ABR billing system. Counselor Griffin, I know there was a, some email interaction regarding some things you needed clarification on with the ABR building contract and the schedule of the council.
Um, yes, the actual documentation that went with it was forty-five pages and it was seven different contracts actually. And they weren't really referring, referencing back to each other correctly. So I've given some email to Ms., what's her last name? Ren, I call her Ren, but.
Nelson.
And she was on vacation and just returning today. Mr. Bostick has also agreed, because they've had workings with them to assist us in getting it together. I think conceptually, there's no big red flags. It's just a matter of how it was presented wasn't really one document for you to be able to enter into. If, if you choose to, you could, I mean, you've already in essence agreed to the, the cost and the concept. So if you want to approve it subject to approval of the city attorney, you could do that. If you want it brought back to you in one cohesive whole, you could do that. However you want to approach it is fine. I don't see any big red flags.
What's council's plan? Yeah, Councilwoman Wallace?
So, so I just definitely want to, you, you made a statement reference to the ABR or something that council picked. We held this, this was a recommendation from USW when we, for the last year, we've been talking about this. And so when we did host town hall meetings to find out where the concerns of everybody, that's all that was. If you know, the other thousand dollars is what we have, we budgeted, we put in the budget to do this. I think in the contracts, because they had like other bells and whistles of things that they can services, they had like these separate pages. But the basic thing we wanted to, the basic thing that I had, we had looked at when we talked was the first of thirty. So, so there was an additional six thousand dollars for training, fifty-five hundred dollars for conversion was the eleven five that we put in the budget. We have about eleven hundred customers. And we, and it's thirty cents per, per account. The main, the main question I think we had was, we're supposed to get, how much was to mail out? Did we ever get that analysis or get that information? I know city staff has got some information in reference to what we're paying to mail out, what we're paying due to different things. And so I would say that we could follow back up with the, I forget her name.
Ron Nelson.
Huh?
Is it Nelson?
Ren Nelson.
Ron Nelson.
Miss Nelson, in reference to the other add-ons, but I think we have enough information to get us move, get us moving. Meaning we got, the first upfront is eleven thousand five hundred. And then the additional fee that we pay would be thirty cents per account. All the other things are things we can pay, I mean, we can come back to. But my, my, the only kind of concern, well, it's not a concern, it's an added value. Is to, is to see if we at, at some later point want to move it to be able to do some of the other payment and other things that are offered. But I want to.
If I could just point out one caveat that I want to make sure that you're aware of. And I've talked to the mayor about this and I'm getting from Ms. Vindham your current contract. The way the cancellation of these contracts work is you have to be very specific on your timing of it. Because the data migration, even though your cost for migration to their system is included, the migration from the other system is not. And it specifically states it's not. So in the other contract, I've seen it be seven to ten thousand dollars additional to get that data migration from their end. Sometimes it's helped if you do it in the exact perfect time, sometimes it isn't. So I really want to take a look at that and make sure that, that, and I, I mean, I don't think that would really change your mind. But then I would need to get with Mr. Johnson and ask you for another budget amendment if there is a, a big fee there. But I, I have seen those be fairly expensive, just so you have that in your mind.
So I guess part of that before I made the motion, we had Mr. Bostick from USW and Ms. Durham kind of helping walk in this through this process. What is the Quick Water? I know we're supposed to be getting some information from Quick Water, who's our current service provider, to migrate the information. I know we have how much the conversion is, which is the fifty-five hundred for ABR. Is there an additional cost? And have, I, I know we said, I think she said thirty to forty-five days was the migration time. And so we wouldn't, that would be a staff function, the mayor and staff. And so we just want to approve it so they can then set up a timeline on when they're going to convert. And so is, is, do you know of anything with Quick Water before we move forward?
Real quickly, the contract that Ms. Durham provided to me, it just had a thirty day out. It, it didn't include any type of fees associated with the migration.
Okay. And we want to have council review that, that's I think what we were talking about.
Sure.
Just to make sure.
Sure.
There was some legal transformation of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the ABR billing system to pay for the training and conversion of the amount of eleven thousand five hundred dollars with the approval from the attorney.
So. Has been properly moved and seconded that council approved the ABR billing system pending approval of city attorney. Further motion, ready for the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those have the same right. Ayes have it. While we're on this issue, one of the things that came up that council pointed out to us that we could discuss at this time through citizen comments was Ms. Barbara Manuel's situation with her water bill. Which wasn't quite well stated. One of the issues that me and Ms. Durham confirmed was Ms. Manuel was on a prior payment plan that was not completed. And it was, there was, and there's current fees that are owed. Am I right, Ms. Durham, you said current outstanding?
You were correct.
And in treating all of our folks, that's, that's the status. I did in my last, or second to the last meeting with Ms. Manuel, I requested that she bring receipts. So there's, there was something, her records showed that our records didn't. And me and Ms. Durham went through that and we did not find subsequent receipts or prior payments. She suggested I give with the former mayor and I suggested she give with the former mayor. Because if there's something going on there that's between them and then bring it to us, that wasn't my job. But that's where that was left. And if there's something else that council wants to know, or, well, Ms. Williams, Councilwoman Williams is going to follow up on that. And so Councilwoman Williams will be following up with you and the city on that. Councilwoman Wallace?
Mr. Mayor, can you, for the citizens who may have additional issues, can you just briefly outline the process? So, you know, with that process, someone has an issue with their, their bill, they can talk to Ms. Durham.
Yes, yeah, Ms. Durham, Ms. Durham oversees the public works accounts. And if someone comes to me, as Ms. Manuel did, I don't know, maybe two years ago, then I, of course.
Now, it was weeks ago, two years ago.
And the first time you came to me was a couple of years or so ago.
But you told me that if I supplied you with only two years, I promise you I won't go back to two thousand and ten. But ever since then, you hadn't gotten back with me. She tell me that she, Ms. Durham said, you didn't tell her that and then you tell me one thing, she tell me another thing. And, and he, and I told her, you, you told me that you wasn't going to take me back to two thousand and ten. Just give you two years with the receipts and I mail it to you certified.
Ms. Manuel?
Yes.
I do not have the power to write off somebody's water bill. I go to Ms. Durham, as Ms. Durham can attest to, and we started with your situation probably more than two years ago.
But I paid, I paid the payment plan out.
Ms. Manuel, you did not provide us receipts.
I did provide you receipts. I sent them to her.
Okay, well.
Now she, now, Ms. Durham is lying, somebody lying. You don't know anything about it because you wasn't here. So when you come on board, she had to tell you what's going on because you wouldn't know. And then tell me this, okay, I've been paying a water bill and I haven't even been having service and you have been cashing my checks and I haven't even had service. And I want to be reimbursed for that too. And I, and I called, I called, I let her know that you've been cashing my checks and I don't even have water. So how you going to be on me and I don't even have no service?
Well, unless they're cashing checks, assuming that's on your back payment.
Now, it's not on my back payment.
But Councilwoman Williams is.
Now, it's, it's stated on there, they saying something about I'm supposed to be paying a flat rate. But why, why should I pay a flat rate and I don't have no service?
If you have an unpaid balance and you're making payments.
No, it's listed on the water, how much I be using.
I don't cut you off. If you're going to cut me off, then we can stop the discussion. What I'm saying is if you have an unpaid balance and you've been sending in payments, which I don't know, that's not what I do, Ms. Durham. If they apply that too, just like you said you had a payment plan before and we tried to put you on a payment plan now, both of which you did not keep.
I did keep, that's a lie.
Okay, well.
You a liar and she's a liar.
Okay, well, records will show that.
Now, but where, where is Mayor Jackson? He was in here, where did he go?
Uh, you might want to go ask him.
He went home.
He had a fire call.
Did you see him when he left?
He left when I.
He had a fire call.
He went home.
Okay.
Yeah, my payment plan was paid out and you told me on the phone, Real McNeil was on, we had you on speaker. Didn't, didn't he tell me supply, he went only two years with the receipt and I mailed it in certified?
Well, on one hand you say I don't talk to you, on the other now you're saying I did. So you need to make up your mind. Councilwoman Wallace?
Now, you need to make up your mind. That's when it first started there. And ever since then, when I send the package in certified, you passed it to Ms. Durham and ever since then, you don't want to talk to me.
That's because, that's what Ms. Durham was doing, she's.
Ms. Durham was not doing nothing but lying and I don't even want to talk to her. She a big liar. And you don't know nobody, you wasn't here, she was here. She keep trying to take me to two thousand and ten.
We are not going to sit here and let you call one of our city employees a liar, okay? Which is going to get checked on, but you're not going to come in here blaspheming people, okay? So Councilwoman Wallace?
Ms. Manuel, we, I think the last time we brought this up, Councilwoman Williams said that she just got the documentation. So give her again until maybe our next meeting. And, and then she can have, and then she'll be the one working with you through this process and then come back. But give us an opportunity to at least identify the issues and then come up with a solution, if you can do that and, and work through Councilwoman Williams. Just give us that opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number five, Mellon Foundation grant from Mrs. Skidi meeting that I attended. I just wanted the record to be clear, I promised reimbursement of the six hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. And a copy of that check is in council's packet. And the check was given to Ms. Johnson, the city treasurer, for the cause. Just want to follow up with what I promised, those months ago when I took that trip. Item seven, item six, there's four billion, almost three hundred million dollars in Hurricane Harvey mitigation new community development block grants. And we're supposed to have more of the details, it just hit this past week. I received a call and some information from Austin on the lady working with on another project. And we'll have more of the details somewhere around February. And of course, we'll make sure all that information goes out to the community. This is going after, if I'm not mistaken, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen flood money. So there's a lot of our folks who were impacted between one or both of those. So that'll be some, some other community development block grants, information that will be put out there shortly. Councilman Jones?
Mr. Mayor, do you, um, do you know how much, I guess hurricane relief money that the city of Prairie View has received due to the fact that we hear that a lot of our citizens have been impacted by numerous of storm and floods? So do you?
No, that, those, those would have been individually filed complaints. Judge Alexander Simmons has been taking the lead and doing a great job. And we're in the process of mitigating our building. But we don't even know those amounts because we have to pay and submit a reimbursement. But the general fees on what people have received, I'm not familiar with that number. Sometimes they do reports by county, sometimes they may include city, but, but I haven't received anything like that. Item seven, city council reports.
Councilwoman Wallace? Counsel, I just would like to say, council and citizens, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to continue to serve. As you know, we've been doing a whole lot. Yesterday, we just had our Founding Day program in the city of Prairie View at Prairieview and University. Where Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated celebrated a hundred and thirteen, thirteen years of service around the country. And so a, as you know, that was a, our speaker, guest speaker was a community citizen, Mr. Lucius R. Wyatt, who has spent sixty-two years in the fraternity of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. We had a number of us citizens and elected officials present. Also had the opportunity to represent the city at, National League of Cities had their conference in San Antonio. Where there were two key things that I'm working on that the city's engaged in and trying to get us back, which was the first project is My Brothers Keepers. Where they had, I don't know if many of you have, you know, know when we've, this first originally kicked off with, under President Obama. The city of Prairie View was one of the five cities in the state of Texas to have a My Brothers Keepers program. And so we're trying to bring that up back. Second was the opportunity to also around what is called Census Champions. And so I have for all the elected officials to take a pledge to become a Census Champion. And it is something that is supporting what we currently already have, that the mayor has, which is called the Complete Count Committee. Many of you know the census is being talked about, that will be unveiled on April first through July. And it's something that's very important. The statistics are that a community gets about ten dollars from the federal government per person counted in reference to funds. So that goes for schools, that goes for federal programs, that goes for financial aid, that goes for SNAP program, that goes for, all federal programs are connected to your count. Our goal for, for the city of Prairie View is to have as, just as many people accounted. Because currently in the twenty, twenty-ten census, the city of Prairie View was the second largest city. And the goal is for this census count for Prairie View to be the largest city in Waller County. It is a difference when, if we hit those numbers, there's a difference in the conversation that the city of Prairie View can have when we talk. So our goal, both with the program that the mayor spearheads, which is called the Complete Count Committee. And then there is Census Champion, which is another committee that again, just helps to make sure that people in, citizens in the community know about the census. Filling out the form, you can either fill it out on your tablet, you can mail it in or someone will be coming by your house. This will start April first, there's jobs available. So if you want any additional information, please let me know how I can, please let me know so we can get you the information you need. Thank you for allowing me to continue to support. Our Boy Scouts will be here on the first and third Wednesday of every month in this room, this building. Again, on December eleventh, our third scout for the last two months will be doing this Eagle Scout project on this tribe. So if you have any books, please drop them off. And we have a court of honor that will be happening at the, this Sunday, at St. Francis of Assisi from four to six. Thank you for allowing me to continue to serve. Happy holidays if I don't see a view before Christmas and the New Year.
Councilwoman Wallace? I mean, Ren?
Question, uh, do you have any Eagle drink?
Yes, for the Census Champ? I'll send it, I'll send it out to everybody.
I'll be brief, just, just a bit of information for the community tomorrow at Waller High School at one P M. There'd be a food bank. When the food bank comes out, they, they hand out food to the community. It's sponsored by Waller High School, so all you have to do is bring bags. And so, you know, they have all kind of non-perishable goods, fruits, vegetables, those kind of things. So that starts at one, I think it goes on to about four. It's a great opportunity to just get some free food. That's all I have. So I was glad to serve and happy holidays.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Jones?
Good evening, I'll be brief as well. I too had the opportunity, been a part of our Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, a hundred and thirteen years of service Founding Day. As well as working with Councilman Wallace with health classes, uniting the campus, the city, as well as the county. As well as working with him upon the zip code, I think withhold the past couple of weeks. We made some major strides with the help of Ms. Durham and the elections office with getting some addresses. So that way we can find out our boundaries as a city. And as always, grateful for the opportunity to serve, as well as you guys could tell me happy belated birthday. I turned twenty-four years old, second of the century. Happy holidays as well if I don't get a chance to see you guys. As well as, I just want to, it was put on my heart to do, open your foot as well. I want to say that I was invited over at the church one day to a lovely Sunday meal. And I as well as met the most beautiful lady of my life at close to ninety years old. And so thank you guys for the opportunity.
Absolutely, thank you.
Councilwoman Williams?
Good evening, thank you for coming out to the city council meetings. Also thank everyone that came out to the town hall meeting that we had over at Pastor Singleton's. This coming Friday, we will have our second town hall meeting at Wise Chapel Missionary Baptist Church, which is behind the university. At five P M. and we refer five P M. to six thirty. Please come out and participate. Our, it's an opportunity for you to say what you want for your city, what you want your city to look like, what we're doing, what we're not doing. It's just an opportunity for us to sit down and listen to you and listen to what you have to say. Again, I want to wish everybody a very merry Christmas and a blessed New Year.
Councilwoman Wallace?
First and foremost, good evening to everyone, much love and positivity. So earlier I was passing around a letter. If you haven't got it, I'll be sure to provide it with you. But the letter basically says, one, happy holiday season to everyone. And just so everyone know that in this position, I know that we have to make decisions, that sometimes we get smiles and sometimes we get otherwise. So on that sheet, I have my business card, that has my phone number and my email. Because I'm always open to dialogue and have discussion on anything that's happening within the city so that we can get at least an understanding of what we can do to work together and make the city better. And then also on the sheet, I have some things that I've been working on, that I want to come into fruition for twenty twenty. So first, the community engagement board. So I'm really looking forward to getting that going in twenty twenty. The community engagement board is people can sign up to apply and represent an area. Let's see, at Prairie View, and it's at the front of the city hall, the front desk. So it's all about community engagement. Some areas of the city feel like they may not be heard as well as other parts. But this is able to give equal opportunity to tell us, what can we do to make sure that your voice is heard? Whether it's town hall meetings, form, what methodology of communication is best so that we can have the conversations that we need to have to move the city forward. Next, I've been working with County Judge Duhon for a Waller County Conference. So there's Texas Municipally, there's National League of Cities. And typically in these conferences, we'll go to San Antonio or different cities. Well, I talked to Judge Duhon, I asked him, has there ever been a Waller County Conference? Where we can bring that knowledge here to the county so we don't have to go far and the cities in the county can work together. He said no, so I'm working on steering committee, talking to other cities so that we can get something going in twenty twenty. So we can talk about whether it's economic development, whether we're talking about community engagement, community development, and bring all that knowledge here. Second or third, also I've been working with Councilman Jones and other zip committee, Mayor David Allen. Just so we can resolve this issue that has been plaguing us for a while now with the zip code. And so as Councilman Jones said, we made, we made strides and we're just continuing trying to make sure that we get this nipped and abuzz so that we can have our boundaries realigned and make sure that we have our identity solidified. Next, in twenty twenty, I'm doing a whole community assessment. So I'm getting my master's in community development. And so one of my major projects for twenty twenty, the whole community assessment. So it's based off the complete communities analysis that is in the city of Houston. So basically what they did was they went to each park or parts of the city of Houston. And they did everything from learning the community history, talking about the infrastructure, talking about is it safe, what are the programs, their neighborhood watch program? And basically does an analysis of it. And takes those problems and provides solutions that the city can use to kind of have as a strategic plan to go forward. So my goal is to go into every part of the city over the next couple of months. And hopefully by the end of twenty twenty, I have a whole community assessment where each community will have their own analysis. So Rosewood, Alta Vista, Clark subdivision, so that we can really look at it and specifically identify what the problem may plague in one community, maybe different from another. And next, I've been doing community service with the Panther Party and a bunch of hands. So you'll see us coming out almost every Friday and Saturday, going door to door. Just telling that the students are here to do community service and anybody who wants to be involved, we're here to help as much as possible. We've done community service multiple times in the past couple of months and we want to keep that going. So whether it's painting rails, we help with a couple of churches, we help do some landscaping, we help revitalize neighborhood signs. We did anything that we felt like people with, with hands could do and, and bring abundance and bring people together, just to help out the things that we need in the city. Next, as Jones said, health classes partnership. So we're trying to partner with the university and the county so that we can provide some of the, the classes that we'll have for students, just for community members. So that we can have it in the community center. And that also that not only benefits of the health, but also bringing people together. And twenty twenty, I'm going to have my second annual protect the village, three week initiative, so last, or this year, the first time we did it was three weeks of historical preservation, community service and social bonding. So we had cookout, we went to Jones Elementary, we made bags for first responders with the kids. We had open mic night, so we just had three weeks of just trying to bring the community together and understanding that we're a village and we got to make sure that we look out for each other. Next, Adopt a Block is happening, so Adopt a Block is like a adopt the highway. So already we had the PV Green Team, already partnered with the Clark subdivision. Shout out to Ms. Carpenter in the back. They actually, so once a month, organizations are signed up to go into different communities in different blocks to clean up that area. And it's not just a one-time thing, like each month coming in. So we already have a multitude of organizations that agree to this. And so they want to make sure that they give back while they're here at the university in any way possible. And they think that being able to clean up some of the areas in the city that they know that students may mess up will help get back and reimburse in that way. Next, I'm creating a, a list of different economic development tools. So in my master's community development, we learned about economic development. So I want to provide that to Economic 4B and talk to y'all about that to see what other types of economic development tools we can use, help finance some of the things that we're trying to have in the city. I'm creating, and I already sent this one out, I want the four entities, a business in the city, the College of Business, Economic 4B, Prairie View Chamber of Commerce and Small Business Development Center. I think this will be beneficial to the city that there was once a month meetings. Because each has a different aspect, but all together they do business development. I think, I know that Economic 4B is doing strategic plan, but providing all the entities together to be in the same, when we talk about these things, I think it could be extremely beneficial to the city. And the last two things, I'm working on an environmental board. So with that, we can focus on energy efficiency, natural preservation and recycling campaigns, which is very important. Because in keeping our identity, we need to make sure that we keep up, not only with the, the things that can keep us as a greener city, but also things that can make us more efficient in our households, keeping the streets cleaner. So I want to create an environmental board, where bring minds together so we can come with an environmental strategic plan. To talk about being a greener city. Lastly, because of my master's, a community development program, a grant search committee. So there's a lot of grants that we can look for, but I want to make sure that we can at least meet up once a month and talk about what type of grants could affect the city, what can impact the city, what's beneficial and recommendations. That if there's a grant that the city may not see, that we can say, hey, we should probably apply for this grant. So that we can get the extra money outside of just the sale taxes and other natural funding ways we have for the city. So once again, it's a happy holiday season, everyone. So once again, it's a happy holiday season to everyone. I hope that if we don't see each other before, uh, twenty-twenty, that y'all have a blessed, blessed rest of twenty-nineteen. I look forward to where the city can grow in twenty-twenty.
Thank you, sir. Um, the town hall meeting with Councilwoman Williams, uh, went well. Some of you, I recognize, personally were in the audience and the audience input and feedback was very good. Um, tomorrow, and just got it, but we've got something here, we'll, we'll do a robo-call. Ms. Finem, in the morning, I'll give you this flyer. The, uh, small business, one hundred million dollar Hurricane Harvey relief program protects the small business. It's not alone. And this is not from the Small Business Administration. This is free money for anyone who does business in the city, you know, and then we've got folks, whether you own apartment complexes or you got a business, uh, landscaping business. This is a meeting that you want to attend. It's actually going to be in this room tomorrow at, uh, three o'clock. Uh, we were able to squeeze in a meeting here, so we're going to try to get as many people as we can, even though we just got the notice, uh, just before the weekend ended. But we will put out a robo-call and if someone wants a copy of this, we can, uh, have you leave here with that this evening as well. Um, also, uh, Ms. Finem, would you pass these up? And, uh, you can hold that one for the top one. Yeah. Okay, Waller County Parks and Open Space Master Plan, there's a public workshop. Um, we were able to get a meeting that will be at the Waller County Community Center, January twenty-first. And that's the flyer that's being passed out. We're trying to get parks and water walkways and things that have been talked about, but now we're trying to get those things done. And there's some funding behind it. So we've got them coming, people will be actually talking about, you want to do a walkway next to a creek over here or you want a bike trail or a walking jogging path. We'll be looking to get those kind of things done and getting Prairie View included. It's already happening in, in other parts of Waller County, at least the meetings. And we were able to, uh, secure a meeting date and location as well. And because it's a, a county situation, we're able to use the Waller County Community Center. So it'd be very, uh, reasonable and accessible to all of our folks. And again, we'll put out a robo-call on this as well, but those are flyers that, uh, they brought over. The, uh, US Department of Agriculture and Cooperative Extension, um, asked me to lead a state conference project, putting together about thirty or more cities for some USDA resource meetings and what have you. The, uh, Board of Adjustments, the Training and Meeting, the Checkers, you'll see the Fuel Mac Shell, Checker's Restaurant, Taco Business inside it and a barbecue place that's going up on the corner. So that's well underway and we're excited and looking forward to that, the jobs that have been, that it's going to bring to the city as well. I had a meeting with Trilogy Engineering, USW, Bureau Veritae-